Thank you for this great nation that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for this day. Help us to make the most of this day, Lord. Please give us wisdom and guidance as we run our meeting here, Lord. You've given us authority over the county and help us to use it wisely. Protect our soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines, Coast Guard, as they protect our nation overseas and locally, Lord. Watch over our sheriff's department. Watch over our county employees, Lord. Many of them have dangerous jobs and they need to go home loving, go home to the loving arms of their family. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have Supervisor Johnson on the phone still. C? Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on October 7th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion and action to approve waiving the reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Official business to come before this board. Discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Mr. Esplin?
Nothing for today.
Thank you. Are there any committee and/or legislative reports? Supervisor Bishop?
Only that we had a successful 73rd Annual Mojave County Fair this weekend.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Angus. Last Tuesday, I attended the Mojave County Water Authority Board Meeting. I've got the agenda here. I can leave with our clerk of our board. Couple of items that are highlight for interest were the fact that Bullhead City now has paid their money to the Board and then dispersed to the city of Kingman, which I'm sure the city of Kingman took in great appreciation. Another thing that was really rather interesting at the meeting, we were given information to the levels of water in each one of the Upper Colorado River Drainage Basin dams. And it's interesting to see that Flaming Gorge, Fontanelle, Merrill Point, Navajo are at 90% full.
Wow.
While Lake Powell's at 56%, and then Lake Mead is at 37%, I believe. And then Lake Mojave and Lake Havasu are both at 90%. So if we have a great deal of snow mass this winter, it might pull us out of our drought situation for Lake Mead. So that's the best news I can give you.
That's great news. Thank you. Supervisor Gould?
Nine to eight, Madam Chairman.
How about Supervisor Johnson?
Nothing, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a short little report. I just returned from Washington DC over the weekend, where I traveled for several reasons. The National Association of Counties sponsored the Southwest Regional White House Conference. This was a follow-up to the event a year and a half ago, which brought the county supervisors to learn about, at that time, the newly-formed White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. This agency was set up by the Trump administration to be the contact point for county governments. Each government agency has a representative, and we met them at the original meeting, which was held March of 2018. Representatives from the US Department of Agriculture, BLM, Parks and Wildlife, the EPA, Trade, Transportation, and HUD spoke to the attendees and took questions. I asked about the possibility of addressing the 1971 Wild Horse and Burrow Act, and the panel agreed that something must be done. We were reassured that it was happening. Vice President Mike Pence dropped in as a surprise and talked about the successes of the Trump administration. I was most interested to hear from the Deputy Director of the Office of National Drug Control Policy, Kendall Urick. I had a lot of questions after his presentation, and I contacted his office that day. I promptly received a call back, and we have arranged for a conference call next week. I talked about the need for more drug treatment centers in rural districts, mat intervention in our jail, as well as the problem of pain medication shortage for chronic pain patients, an ongoing problem here in Mojave County. They are very anxious to learn about our needs. While in Washington, I met with Congressman Gosar and Senator McSally about mental health issues. They were very supportive and said they'd help with grants, to help with support of grants for our rural area. Finally, I met with Congresswoman Lesko's office, as well with our friend Nick Mattia, who we first met when he worked with Senator McCain and now works for the Senate's Committee on Natural Resources. Again, we spoke about boroughs, and I was happy to hear that there is a movement towards handling this problem, which everyone agrees is at a crisis point. I was unable to connect with Senator Sinema, but will continue to reach out to her and the rest of the Arizona Congressional delegation for support for drug and mental health treatment for Mojave County. And that's all I have. I need a motion for the approval of the August 19th, 2019 Board of Supervisor Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I guess I left out the county manager's report, but...
Just to break in tradition, I was at the Mojave, MBIDD, Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District Meeting. Most of their items were starred for executive session, but their main topic of discussion was intentionally created surplus, their following program, and that they really don't have final approval on anything. They're going to, they were supposed to speak with DWR last week late, and I haven't gotten an update on that. But thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much. All right, so we're on to the Call to Public. Those wishing to address the Board at the Call to the Public regarding matters not on the Board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a Call to the Public Request to Speak Form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting pursuant to ARS 38-43101. A public body may make an open call to the public during a public meeting, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of this public body. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on the future agenda. However, members of the public body shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during the open call to public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do have three people signed up.
Thank you. Jemm Morgen, Kingman resident and District 1 constituent. We've been calling on you to condemn Commissioner Gillette's racist Facebook rants for weeks. Your silence says you don't care. Your silence says you are unaccountable to constituents. Worst of all, your silence normalizes racism and white nationalism. White nationalism seeks to maintain a white national identity and ensure the survival of the white race. It holds that white people should maintain their majority, that their cultures should be foremost. They believe interracial relationships, multiculturalism, immigration of non-whites, and low birth rates among whites are threatening the white race. Luana Gillette's words. We have a country that is turning brown, which means that in no time at all, white people will be in the minority. First of all, white people are having fewer children. Second, most of the immigrants, mostly coming here illegally, are brown, and they are having many children. Plus, there is a lot of commingling going on, interracial marriages. Regardless of the reason, whether it be because of interracial marriages or illegals coming across our border, the United States is becoming more and more brown. This is America. This is a Christian nation. I like it like that. It's what we have always been and what we were meant to be. We have to fight for our country and America. We must stop the minorities from coming here and trying to change us. We have cities now that you would not know are in the United States. If you drive through Arvin, you would think you are in Mexico. All signs in Mexican. Monterey Park, all the signs are in some Asian language. We actually have Muslim communities now in the US, and they are, according to her, using Sharia law. We had better wake up before we lose America for our children and grandchildren. Nothing I have said says I don't respect large sections of the populace. I just don't like it when people try to change the United States into another country. I said I wanted them to come to America and become Americans, not to come here and bring what they left with them. I'm not going to defend myself. I'm very happy with myself and my convictions. There is no question that Luana Gillette's words are racist, and her worldview conforms with white nationalism. She's not just stating facts, she's using facts to make her case for why we need to wake up and fight to save our country for our children and grandchildren. Michael Johnson wrote to Senator Sinema about what's happening, and this is what the senator said, quote, "I am deeply concerned by the rise of white nationalist rhetoric in the United States. We cannot normalize hatred and bigotry, and such rhetoric should be condemned at every turn." It's time for this Board to condemn Commissioner Gillette's words and stop normalizing racism and white nationalism in Mojave County. Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning, Mary McCord Robinson, 2626 North Twin Hills Road, Kingman. I have various things to talk about. One, I wanted to follow up on my comments last week regarding the panhandlers out at Petro. And by noon that Monday, they were cleared out. It was also the first of the month, and they're usually not there because they've just gotten paid. They're all back in full force now, and I wish the sheriff were here, because I have several pictures from just the last three days, the last 48 hours really, of the panhandlers, the people parked on the side, and the 18-wheelers that were coming head-on in my direction. And then the panhandlers that were there this morning, preparing to set up for their day. So we got immediately immediate response. We need ongoing response to move them out. It is a hazard to those of us who are driving in and out of the Blake Ranch Road area. And speaking of Blake Ranch Road, I find it a waste of the county's money and resources to be filling, you know, a few potholes on Blake Ranch Road every month. Every month, there is a truck, two employees, that spend an entire day with their bags of fill going in each direction. It's just an absolute waste of county funding when there are a lot of other roads in this county that need attention. I also sent you all an invitation to hear Mark Kelly on Friday evening, or All Day Friday, Havasu, Bullhead City, and Kingman. Bullhead City is sold out, so you won't be able to get into that event, but I wanted to officially extend that invitation to you all again. If you need information, please contact me. And back to the Luana Gillette and Ron Gould and the county's Board's position. A public statement would be nice if there was one that was published previously. I think many of us may have missed it, so I would ask you to republish that, whether that's on your page or throughout the local newspapers. But if you have a position, we need to see it, because our view right now, my view, is that silence is not giving us a position on where the Board stands on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Good morning, Chairwoman. Armin Stange, 4321 South Cabal Road, Fort Mojave.
Take off, please.
Okay, this thing is working. I just have a few things. I called to, I talked to Supervisor Gould in regards of the landfill and the public service. It lasted for two days, that the truck drivers slowed down, and now they're back to their normal speeding on the dirt roads. And I was standing outside my property on Thursday morning, about 6 o'clock, talking to a neighbor, and this truck driver drove by like an idiot twice. It's getting out of hand with the garbage people. I mean, Hargus, they slowed down, it's okay. And then the other thing what I have is with the neighborhood of Leclerc Acres, since nothing is going to be done with Barry Messner, we have more motorhomes and trailers moving in and just living there. This is unacceptable. You know, we're paying premium prices on property taxes, and they're dragging our taxes, our property values down. You know, it's not only me who is complaining about it. There is a few other people that rode to the county, and they haven't even gotten a response back. And then the third thing what I have is, what do we have to do to get this county as a second amendment sanctuary? And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, we have a couple of proclamations this morning. We have adoption of proclamation naming the month of October 2019 as Cyber Security Month in Mojave County. Would anyone like me to read it, or do we just want to go ahead and have a motion? Well, since it's kind of short, I will, I will read that. Oh, the cybersecurity one is first. I'm sorry, it was different. It's kind of a longer one. Supervisor Johnson, would you like to read it or make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. It'll be put on the website for people if they're interested.
Okay, thank you. Second. Okay, we have a motion and second, and again, if you want to read it, it's on our website. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next one is adoption proclamation naming the month of October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Mojave County. And this one is short enough that I'm going to read it. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of controlling behaviors where one person uses their power to control the other, domestic violence can take many forms, including physical, sexual, emotional, and financial abuse. It is not isolated to anyone, gender, race, economic situation, or upbringing. Our state has seen the damage this issue can inflict, not only on victims, but on the community as a whole. And whereas domestic violence is a nationwide epidemic which affects our community, our family, our friends, and our neighbors. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is widespread, affecting the moral fabric of society as a whole. Now, therefore, we, the Mojave County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Chairman Angus, motion to approve. I need a second.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a couple of presentations. The first one is Mr. Alan Pruitt regarding the Western Arizona Economic Development District. Mr. Pruitt?
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Supervisors. I believe I forwarded a presentation. Oh, there it is. First this morning, I'd like to acknowledge and express my gratitude to Tammy Ursenbach, Economic Development Director from Mojave County. We've worked closely, literally since her first week in her position here, and we've maintained close contact, both in person and computer and everything else. And through her hard work and invitation for me to present up here, I welcome this opportunity. And I'll just get to get started here. Do I advance it on the screen here? Oh, there we go. What I'd like to do is walk you through a timeline, since Mojave County, La Paz, and Yuma County have somewhat of a history with Western Arizona Economic District, and it started in 1999. That's when a group of people under the Western Arizona Council of Government decided to form an Economic Development District, which is an economic development entity under the US Economic Development Administration, US Department of Commerce. In 1999, the entire state of Arizona is covered by COGS, Council of Governments, and presently, all of the Economic Development Districts in Arizona fall under a version of the COG, wherever they are locally. Historically, Supervisor Johnson was on this original committee that formed the district, along with Supervisor Tony Reyes in Yuma County and Supervisor DL Wilson in La Paz County. So it's been a while getting started. The WACOG for the next decade oversaw the administration of the Economic Development District. It was run as a internal department within the COG, along with the many other programs that they administer in Western Arizona. In 2002, they petitioned the US Economic Development Administration to be permanently designated as a district, an Economic Development District. And this was done in line with the existing federal regulations at the time. And what this comprised of was a series of letters of support and county resolutions, which were forwarded to the governor of Arizona at the time, and then sent to the US Secretary of Commerce in order to designate Western Arizona as a permanent Economic Development District. This district designation process, you have to remember, in 2002, this is pre-internet. We didn't have email really to speak of. Everything was done by typewritten letters and faxes and three-ring binders that were overnighted back and forth to Washington DC and our regional office, which is in Seattle. In 2007 is when I relocate, relocated to Western Arizona, and this is when I was started to work for the Small Business Development Center Network as a business analyst. I covered Yuma, La Paz, and Mojave County. I was charged with helping small businesses start up, giving them advice on entrepreneurs that wanted to start new businesses in communities. This was also the time that the social media took off, and I started traveling statewide. My background in another life was heavily technically oriented, and I took duck to water as far as helping businesses get their Facebook pages and Twitter and everything else to get their presence out there. During this time in 2007, WACOG became a client, under my client list, for the Small Business Development Center, and I started working with Brian Babiers with WACOG, who I believe is still the executive director there, in helping them to strategize on what's known as their Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which is an annual document to the Economic Development Administration on the strategic outlook for economic development efforts in all three counties. This SEDS document is an annual report. It's my deliverable to the EDA, and it presents a robust, thorough projection of not only where the counties are as a district, as a region, actually, in economic development, but what the plans are strategically looking forward. In 2009, the WACOG Board at the time made a decision to have a divorce with the district, so to speak. The district wanted, they wanted the district to be an independent entity and not under the administration of the COG. Now, this is currently the only Economic Development District that does not have the umbrella of the Council of Government for wherever jurisdiction they have in Arizona. I was appointed the executive director by the Board in 2009, and from 2, from 1999 until literally this past Friday, and I'll explain, we existed under a term as Short Term Planning Grants by the Economic Development Administration, and these were annual grant applications made to EDA that went through the entire process on grants.gov, if you're familiar with that. And I would apply in mid-May, and I would find out right about now if the grant was approved or not. So the Short Term Planning Grants were appropriations that were set aside for all Economic Development Districts through the nation. And we're getting to the point here, in 2018, the EDA decided that it was time to move forward with this district designation process. Now, we get to go back in time a little bit here. Remember, I mentioned in 2002 that this application was made, paper application, well, that was up in Seattle, and through attrition, through the employees they had there at the EDA, and transferring from paper technology to digital technology, a basement flood, computers crashing, you name it, poof, gone. Our original application, including all the original letters from all of the statutory required signatures, disappeared. And this was on EDA. They apologized profusely for losing control of this application process, and they asked, would the district like to reapply for the permanent district designation? I said, of course, because I was lucky that I had a pile of banker boxes that had all the copies of every document that was submitted in 2002. I digitized this entire paper trail. We sat down and strategized over it with our EDA representatives and found out where the gaps were and what had to be updated. And that basically came down to, first, the Board of Supervisor Resolutions, and then letters of support from a wide cast of audiences and stakeholders in the district, from Mojave Community College to bankers, to Small Business Development Center, to higher education up and down the chain of stakeholders in community economic development. Seattle Regional Office. EDA, they call it a filing mishap. Things happen. I said, well, let's go ahead and see what we can do to get back on track here. In 2019, this year, by mid-May, I had most of these documents recreated where I'm at now, and this includes Senator Sinema and Senator McSally's office, with their very, I'm very thankful for their support of this. We have a package now, digital and physical, to go to the governor's office in order to have a letter drafted from the governor to Commerce Secretary Ross, and requesting that the Department of Commerce, again, give that permanent designation a do-over, so to speak, to Western Arizona. This permanent status, what does that mean? This permanent status, one, moves us out of the Short Term Planning Grants, which are basically these annual things where they could literally, through whatever appropriations, could be victim to a budget cut or appropriations that wasn't approved. And this put us, you know, from 1999 until last year, in a short-term, temporary, kind of hard-to-plan, over-the-horizon for what direction we wanted to go to as a district. What the permanent status does is moves us out of the Short Term Planning Grant and into what's called Economic Adjustment Assistance, which are longer-term periods, not only for funding, but also for planning. And this gives us that long-range, over-the-horizon outlook on our economic development strategies. These Economic Assistance, Economic Adjustment Assistance, sorry, it was approved on Friday morning this past week. So the, there's optimism at the Department of Commerce that this district designation process will take place during this current fiscal year, which is July 1 until June 30 of next year. They're projecting about April 1. That will have the letter, the required letter from the Department of Commerce, and will move forward into this long-term relationship with the EDA. Again, just to highlight, this gives us project continuity. It enables us to do long-term planning and sustainable development, especially with my economic development partners like Tammy, Yuma County, and La Paz County. It allows us to work as a team on a regional economic development strategy. These letters of support and Board of Supervisor Resolutions have been extremely helpful in projecting the needs and wants of the local communities to the EDA and the Department of Commerce on how valued, the value they place on having a permanent Economic Development District. There is a website that, remember, I mentioned that we have a Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. There's a website devoted to that. The URL is at the top of the banner. And this is an exhaustive strategic document. If you go through there, you'll find plenty of information that is current, as current as I can make that, along with Tammy's help, on Mojave County and their communities. These Board of Supervisor Resolutions were, again, completed April, June, and July. These Board of Supervisor resolutions were again completed April, June, and July. The next steps is the letter of support from the, from the governor's office. What I have to do is contact the Chief of Staff's office in Phoenix and schedule an appointment, just like any other piece of business with the governor's office. We've done this once before. It's routine for this type of effort, and I'll, again, be taking digital and physical copies of everything to the governor's office. What's the purpose? What's the why? The why is, is the identification of projects to be eligible for funding from the U.S. Economic Development Administration. Now, this SEDS document, the most important part of that is something called the project, Vital Projects, which is right there in the lower left-hand corner. I put that at the top of the webpage because this is how communities, usually through their CIP list, identify mainly public infrastructure projects that they're seeking financial partnership with the U.S. Department of Commerce on investment. This could be buildings, this could, well, part of buildings. It could be entrance and exits from a building, pipes, sewers, the stuff you can't see. I hate to admit it, but public infrastructure isn't sexy. It's not the business attraction and retention. It's the stuff you can't see. It's usually hidden by the ground or behind walls or in buildings, but it's the scaffolding that a community has where they can further their economic development programs. Examples here in Mojave County of successful EDA funding projects was, just prior to my watch, was at the Kingman Airport. There was the underpass that goes from I-40 on to the airport grounds proper. That underpass was an EDA-funded project to help with the movement of materials and supplies in and out of the airport so they could avoid the crossing delays used out the railroad going through there. The other project was down in Lake Havasu City at the airport. There was a hangar complex, two buildings, I believe, that were originally going to be an industrial park-type area at the airport for aviation-related concerns, and I believe what moved in there was advanced marine craft research and design companies. So that was kind of a project where you didn't quite see that coming in. You're building on an airport, but you have high-end marine craft design and building there, so it's turned out to be a good partnership. Another successful funding project we had was in an area called South Parker, which is about, is west of Parker proper, about 12 miles, and it was an oil re-refinery project, which is located right on the rail spur there. Trains would collect all of the waste oil from oil recycling places and minute oil changes in Southern California and bring it over once a week in tank cars. The fuel would be re-refined and brought up to some standard, and it would be shipped back to Long Beach as bunker fuel for marine-going vessels and everything. So it was kind of a sustainability project that, you know, helped in a lot of ways with, literally with international commerce. We play a small part in that. And Yuma County, two successful projects down there on my watch was the San Luis Business Incubator, which is a federally funded facility right on the border. You can walk out the back door. Mexico is a stone throw away. And also the Defense Contractor Complex at Yuma International Airport. That was a $4.25 million investment in the airport. They just got their first Class A tenant aerospace firm that's going to be hiring approximately 55 people in the local community for advanced aviation projects there at the Marine Corps Air Station. So bringing it back to a local level, this SEDS document, the district, what we're looking for are these projects, infrastructure projects, that if not but for the EDA investment might not be a reality for the community. What's helpful for the district, why this district is so important in this funding, is something called distress factors. Distress factors are unemployment, poverty level, certain income thresholds, where when you combine those together, it places the district in what's defined as a distressed community. Our entire district is distressed by federal standards, dealing with all these factors. What that does essentially is, if you were to score a project from zero to 100, we started 80, 80 points, and it works up from there. The only thing that scores higher are tribal projects would already start at 100 on the scale, as far as looking at, you know, funding possibilities. An advantage we have is we have no deadlines. We have no timelines when it comes to applying for projects that are possibly in your CIP. So there's not like, oh, we have to have this completed by August, October 1, typical federal fiscal year, or we must have a December 31 deadline to apply, and that's our only chance. You can apply year-round, which is very helpful from a planning perspective. These projects are not limited just to EDA. Any federal projects. The next highest per capita contributor to economic development projects in Arizona is the U.S. Department of Agriculture, USDA. They have millions to invest in rural communities and economic development projects, and there's quite a few success stories with USDA in rural Arizona. And also within this scope here, there could be other funding projects from NOAA, National Oceanic Administration, to EPA, to USDA, it's broad spectrum. We're, it's a level playing field. That's what this SEDS document does, as well as state economic development projects. They require some kind of strategy as well as due diligence already completed, and this is the role that the district helps with. I want to thank you for the gift of your time. Be happy to answer any questions. I work closely with Ms. Urshinbach back here, and are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Pruitt? Supervisor Gould?
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Supervisor Johnson? Are you still, Supervisor Johnson, are you still with us? Okay. Well, if you're here, just pipe in. I have just a couple of questions.
Sure.
So you talked about doing a projects, two projects, one in Kingman and one in Havasu. How long did that take from start to finish to get the funding, and how much did you actually get?
I can't speak to those two projects there before my watch. I can speak to two definitely. The Defense Contractor Complex, from application to the first shovel was less than nine months. And the completion, now that project, although it was a, what helped that project was the airport authority in Yuma. Under Arizona revised statutes, they're their own body politic because they elect their own board, and they're able to raise bonds and go out and raise their own funds. The local match was critical for that to be a successful project. The local match was about 2.1 million.
That was my next question. So do most of these projects have local matches?
There's a local match with any federal project. It's the skin in the game. EDA has, you know, traditionally doesn't want to be the only check on the table. They like to share the investment in the, in the project. EDA investments go from infrastructure all the way through research and development, business incubation, which is my specialty. That is something I'm certified in, is business incubation. We have one close by in Flagstaff with NAU, EDA-funded business incubator up there. That was a $25 million investment. I was there for the groundbreaking, groundbreaking on the first night, and Russ Yelton, the first executive director up there, told me his first mistake when he applied for that grant is he didn't ask for enough when it was initially awarded, so.
You used the word incubator. So you said that there was an incubator that let out on the border on the other side. So just real quick, what is, what is an incubator?
This is incubator. That's a facility. It's a, it's a hard, it is a brand-new Class A building that is purpose-built for businesses to move into, to make that next step into maturing as a business. This is where the idea has gone from the napkin, from the coffee table. It's, has some initial funding, which is usually friends and family, and maybe some bank support, and it's a viable idea. The bank likes it. They've been advised that this has potential. It goes into the incubator, and it's able to have halls and walls, as I say.
So this incubator that you talked about, it's full? There's, there's companies in it?
Yes, there's companies in there that are, right now are currently related to transportation and logistics, as well as some technology-related companies. They're, they're, they're self-managed, but they're, they're a tenant of the city of San Luis there in this facility.
Okay.
The idea is not to become too comfortable. Business incubators have that new car showroom type of smell and feel and everything, but you need to graduate. And when a business graduates, the hope is, is that they're, A, staying local, two, they're hiring locally, and three, they're consuming goods and services in the community.
And this district, you oversee that? Make sure that all that happens?
The city of San Luis, their community development director, who is Ms. Urshinbach's counterpart in city of San Luis, that's her direct responsibility as facility manager.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Where does the funding for you, for this district come from? And how many employee, how many people does that entail?
It's USDA, I'm sorry, U.S. Economic Development Administration, EDA. I am the sole employee economic development director, and then I, I have my team, which I consider the economic development directors of each of the counties, as well as at-large members that help with the oversight and the strategy. There's a board. There's, you know, it's a nonprofit under Arizona revised statutes.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pruitt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have a presentation of the 2019 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement awarded by the National Procurement Institute, NPI, to Mojave County Procurement Department.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, County Manager Mike Kendricks, Ryan. It's really my pleasure today to come before you and let you know that your Mojave County Procurement Department has been awarded the prestigious 24th, 24th Annual Achievement of Excellence in Procurement for 2019, and that's from the National Procurement Institute. This is the 14th time that Mojave County has earned this award. The AEP award is earned by public and nonprofit organizations that demonstrate excellence by obtaining a high application score based on standardized criteria. The AEP is awarded annually to recognize innovation, professionalism, e-procurement, productivity, and leadership in the procurement function. For continued achievement in earning this award, we must continue to benchmark our processes and procedures in accordance with best practices and work for continued improvement and innovation. The application process is rigorous and requires comprehensive documentation in 18 categories. The AEP program encourages the development of excellence as well as continued organizational improvements to earn the award. For 2019, Mojave County is one of only 12 agencies in Arizona and one of only 42, 42 counties in the United States and Canada to receive the award. Based on these numbers, we are very proud to be part of a very exclusive group. Our success would not be achievable without the support of all of our county departments. This award is achieved through a commitment at all levels of the organization to ensure that the laws, policies, and procedures related to the procurement function are followed. The Procurement Department would like to thank the Board of Supervisors, the County Manager's Office, our legal representation, and all of our department, county department staff members for their support and partnership. We are committed to continuing our commitment to excellence and innovation. At this time, I'd like to introduce your Procurement Department team that has worked so hard to earn this award. Seems like a couple of them haven't got here, but, okay, good. Come on down. To begin, to begin with, I'd like to recognize our procurement technician, Selena Leon, our warehouse, what I call expert, Curtis Shelton, one of our procurement officers, Morgan Michaels, our procurement officer senior, Michelle Fink. And I'd like to just pay special recognition to Tony Burgett. He was our procurement supervisor over this past year. Tony just recently retired from Mojave County earlier this month, and he's not able to be here today. Tony was instrumental to our success and will be missed by everyone. And Tony, if you're watching today, I want to say thank you. And finally, I'm the Mojave County Procurement Director, Becky O'Brien. And if you would let us, I'd like to ask you to join us up front to take a picture and commemorate this year's award.
Sure.
Okay, now we're on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, items 5 through 37, will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion minus any items pulled for discussion. Supervisor Bishop?
I have none to pull.
Supervisor Watson?
Not today, thank you.
Supervisor Gould?
Number 20, number 25, and number 31.
Okay, and Supervisor Johnson?
None, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve consent agendas, items 5 through 37, minus 20, 25, and 31.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Item 20, approve the monthly July 2019 report for procurement activity between 10,000 and 50,000. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was taking a look at the procurement activity, one kind of funny sidebar. Apparently, we buy road salt from a guy named Charlie Pepper, which is kind of, just kind of a funny sidebar. But I noticed down on page 20 that we, for each of the three county libraries, we spend $82.62 on armored car service. And apparently, we sent, an armored car comes out and picks up the receipts from the public library, looks like once a month. I'm kind of wondering, what's the take from a public library that we need to have an armored car come and make the deposits?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, I'm not sure what the receipts are, but I know Kathy is here today, so she might be able to better answer that question.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. I can just give you a general, even a weekly treasurer's report can be in the $500 range, so, you know, a couple thousand a month at each of the branches.
Okay, and the armored car comes once a month to pick up those receipts?
No, they come weekly.
It's interesting, because it says, so that's a weekly, so it'd actually be divided by 52 and not 12?
I'm sorry, I'm not the one that writes that, so I can't, I can't tell you. But I will say that I was told when we came to Mojave County that, when I came to Mojave County, is that County, is that staff were not to get in their car and go down and make a bank deposit, that it wasn't safe. And that's one of the reasons that we do that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else? Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move that item 20 be adopted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, 25, approve Mojave County Parks and Race to accept donation of three all-train vehicles from the United States Public Defense Law Enforcement Support Program, and further approve the transfer of Kawasaki Mule 600 to Race, Kawasaki Mule 610 to Davis Park Camp, and Kawasaki Mule 4010 to Walpai Mountain Park for use by park rangers and the race officers in the line of duty.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was just concerned, are these UTVs going to replace some existing UTVs? Or is this a new, would be a new vehicle for the parks law enforcement?
Good morning, Chairman Angus, Supervisor Gould, members of the Board. These are an opportunity to acquire two all-train vehicles for both the Walpai Mountain Park and Davis Camp. It is my understanding that these would supplement the existing vehicle fleet that we currently have, you know, for purposes of, you know, ease of access to train challenge areas via these vehicles. I do have Todd Davison, our race coordinator, on hand, who can speak to some more specific questions as to their use.
Yeah, I was just concerned whether these were replacement vehicles or whether, so apparently, they're going to supplement. And my other concern was when, since these are used vehicles, when they wear out, are we going to see you come to us and ask for money to replace these vehicles?
Good morning. Basically, these are going to be new vehicles. They're not replacing existing vehicles. They're just, the main purpose behind them is so that we can access some areas that we have difficulty accessing with just our regular pickup kind of vehicles. They're a little more narrow and a little easier to get in and out of. And we actually have one that the race detectives are going to use as well, so that they can access more trail size paths where people are dumping. As far as the future goes, these are a donation, so we can either choose to fix them up or auction them off at any point. The money, the proceeds from any auction has to go back into the law enforcement program. That's part of the deal with them. But we've already established that there's going to be very, very little that needs to be done to them to get them running properly. So the upkeep isn't going to be great on these, partly because of the size of the vehicles. But at any time, if we choose that we don't want to continue with fixing them up or using them, we can auction them off.
I would argue that they do break down. And if you look at UTV repair shops, that's a booming business in the county. So they break down just like anything else that man makes. I'm just concerned that they'll then become a necessity and that they'll then be incorporated into the budget. I'm just worried about budget creep. But, thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Supervisor Gould?
Madam Chairman, I move that item 25 be adopted.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 31, approve the issuance of notice of assessment in the amount of $5,574.16 against parcel number 324-06-289 behalf of the Mojave County Development Service for remediation of an unsafe structure. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was curious whether the Board votes on whether to demolish these buildings in the first place, or whether that's just done by community development.
Good morning, Chairman Angus, Supervisor Gould. Development Services oversees the dangerous building abatement. It's actually through the chief building official for the development, for the building division. They inspect the property. If it's found to be in a dangerous condition, then it'll be, basically, it's noticed, we notice the property owner and tell them, hey, there's a problem here, there's a dangerous building, it needs to be addressed. We give them the opportunity to abate that themselves. If they don't, and that danger continues, then we take it before, we have a committee, the Abatement Action Committee, and basically present, there's a number of properties throughout the county that need attention. So we take these dangerous buildings before the Abatement Action Committee. They then prioritize them, present that recommendation to me as the Director of Development Services, and then we take action on those.
Okay. So this is work that's already been completed, and the owner has not, has not paid, so we're going to go ahead and place a lien on his property?
That's correct.
When do we expect to sue to enforce the lien and foreclose on his property?
That's a very good question. Typically, we'll place the lien on it. And once that, in general, basically, what happens is if that property owner goes to sell that property, we would then collect our lien. We don't typically foreclose on these liens. We basically place them on the, on the property and then, and wait for that action to occur.
Does state statute allow us to foreclose on the property?
My understanding is that it does. I'll probably lean on Attorney Asplin to help me with that.
Do we know the value of this property?
The specific property, I don't know the value of the property. I know the cost to abate it was, was what's being presented with the lien.
Right, $5,500 and change.
Yeah, that's correct.
I was just curious, what, if we looked at the value of the property?
We do, generally, basically, as...
And I guess if it's a public danger, we don't really want to be concerned with, is the value of the property greater than the cost to abate the danger?
That's, that's exactly...
But I guess it really doesn't matter if we never, we never foreclose on anybody to regain the money. So it just becomes a general fund hit, then?
Precisely. Basically, we look at the danger, we address the danger, and then, then we turn it over to the attorney's office, they'll place the lien on it, and then, if it's, if we get that money back, great. But our main focus as a department is abating that danger that exists there.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chairman, I believe it's important for Tim to identify where the actual funding comes from for the abatement, for this dangerous building abatement program, if we could do that for us.
I'd be happy to. Thank you. The Dangerous Building Abatement Program is funded through a fee collected at the landfills. Basically, for every ton of trash deposited at the landfill, a dollar fee is charged. 50 cents of that comes to the Dangerous Building Abatement Program. 50 cents goes to environmental health to abate trash and that, so.
So, Madam Chairman, so we charge people that take their garbage to the landfill to pay for the people that don't take their garbage to the landfill?
Could be reason.
Or rhetorical. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Gould?
Sure. Madam Chairman, I move that item 31 be adopted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Public hearing time. I'm opening the public hearing on item 38. It's a discussion of possible action to approve changes to the voter registration fee structure as follows. Increase of 58 cents per active voter in non-consolidated special elections totaling $1.75 per active voter, and an increase of 24 cents per active voter for consolidated elections totaling 64 cents per active voter.
Madam Chairman.
Oh, all right. Okay, that's right. Is there anyone, I'm so sorry. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to this? This is an open public hearing. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing now.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
I was wondering if the recorder could tell me what branches of government pay this fee?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, it would be the special districts, fire districts, school districts, cities are typically, if they ask us to conduct their elections...
So, they pay for their election, and so every branch of government that's holding an election effectively pays that fee for that voter? And that's why the price for a special election is higher than the general, than the regular election, because there's less taxing authorities asking the questions?
Well, we're conducting their elections for them, so we're basically stopping what we normally would do, like this November?
Sure.
To conduct their elections for them, so that is a higher rate than if it was during a primary or general where we're kind of doing the process anyway.
I noticed there was a fee for the presidential preference election. Does that bill go to the political parties?
By statute, we are reimbursed currently by the Secretary of State's office at a dollar, I believe it's $1.25 per voter.
Okay. So it comes from the state, then, pays that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have questions for the recorder? Supervisor Johnson? Is he here?
No questions, ma'am.
Thank you. I just have a couple, because my district is having one of these special elections, and they've approached me and asked why, you know, this is happening and coming up. And I know that you've, thank you, you've worked with them, but just, so explain, I mean, you have a department that's here, and there's not that many elections. I mean, what, what do you have to do that warrants this kind of increase? And it's concerning what the initial was, it's kind of a substantial increase. But explain to the viewers and the people watching why this is important.
Well, the last analysis was done in 2014. And since that time, there's been several increases in postage. At the time in 2014, we processed the ballots in-house. We now outsource them as it being more cost-effective. Those are really the two major increases, is postage and the printing.
So you say outsource it. You're talking about just these solely mail ballots? Or do you outsource now, or are we being outsourced for every election?
Well, every election has...
You're talking about the mailing of the mail ballots is outsourced?
You know, elections has a separate fee and a separate process. But the mail, for voter registration or an all-mail election, it is just the cost of the postage and the printing that we have outsourced.
And what part of this is being absorbed by the, by the general fund?
There should be no general fund costs. This analysis should cover the costs of the process.
And this is paid by the jurisdiction that is choosing to have this election?
Yes.
And what is the cost, so during a regular election, let's say, let's say, the city, they pay a per-voter fee for that, their election, even though it's an election that is county-wide?
Yes.
And what is the percentage, it's higher during a special election?
Absolutely.
Substantially higher?
It's a higher cost, because there's no other election taking place. So when the, when the entities ask us to conduct that for them, you know, there's an elections cost and then a voter registration cost, they absorb that cost, because otherwise it would cost them. So our analysis is what it, you know, personnel, time, printing, postage, all of the factors that go into basically conducting this for them.
So, you know, and this is a question that was kind of asked of me, how come that's not put into the budget for the recorder and the elections department? Because it almost seems like they're paying twice. They're paying to have these departments, and then they're paying to vote again, when the job is to conduct elections. I'm just trying to get some answers that have been asked of me.
Because typically, during a consolidated election, there's something specific that is a portion of that. There's something specific to do with the city or the school district that's requiring a different aspect than if it was just the same ballot going to every single household.
Right. Right. So there's a separate ballot that has to be, when it would be just a general, even though they are divided up into different districts, you have different names and things on different districts.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. Any, any other questions? Anyone? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion?
I move that item 38 be adopted.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Regular agenda, item 39 and the next three come from Ken Cunningham, Human Resources Direction, discussion of possible action to approve changes to personnel policies and procedures, sections 3.5 and 3.2, unpaid leave policies. Do you have a motion? Or question? Or breath, or cough, anything?
Madam Chairman, I move that item 39 be adopted.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 40, discussion of possible action to approve changes to personnel policies and procedures, section 3.2, Family and Medical Leave Act. Make a motion to approve?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 41, discussion of possible action to approve changes to personnel policies and procedures, section 6.4, Educational Assistance.
Madam Chairman, I had a question on that one.
Okay. Ken here?
Madam Chairman, I have Jade Hunga that will answer questions for Human Resources Department.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
And I will also.
Thank you, Coral.
I'm just curious, how many employees had requested reimbursement for education expenses last year, or in the last period, say?
So Chairman Angus, Supervisor Gould, and Board of Supervisors, I believe that there are probably five?
Okay.
From, from my memory. And none of them approached the amount, but the current amount is $5,250 before it would enter into a taxable situation, and we want to avoid going into that direction, therefore, adopt the language. That would max out the benefit at the taxable amount. So once it hit a taxable event, then it would not only cost the employee income taxes, but it would cost the county FICA and Medicare. So we wanted to kind of avoid that.
On top of the reimbursement, then?
Right.
And that's what this does, is it puts a cap on the...
Correct.
...on the educational reimbursement expenses. So if it's less, if it was five and none of them hit the max, then the total dollar would, amount would be less than $25,000?
That's exactly right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
I move that item 41 be adopted.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 42, brought by Development Services Director Tim Walsh, discussion of possible action to accept the invitation to become a cooperating agency for the Moss Mine Expansion and Exploration Project, and naming Tim Walsh Jr., P.E., as the contact point for Mojave County for the purposes of preparing a memorandum of understanding for board consideration. Chairman Angus, I'll make a motion to approve?
I had a question.
Okay. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. What's our goal in being a cooperative agency? I went on the, we've got a couple of links on there to take a look at the BLM's gibberish. I'm only partly fluent in gibberish, so I couldn't make heads or tails out of it.
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Gould, members of the Board, what this does is, the Moss Mine is looking to expand their, their production there. BLM is asking, in order to expand that, the BLM has to go through this process. BLM has invited us to participate in that process. Basically, it gives us a seat at the table in reviewing these documents, and if we have any concerns through this process, it gives us that voice to share those concerns.
And BLM's paperwork says that we're expected to pick up our own costs on this? Do you have any idea what those costs might be?
Those costs generally are very minimal. Basically, it's our cost to get to the meeting, attend the meeting, and hear the information that's presented.
So we're not going to hire a cadre of lawyers to go out and protect our citizens' rights on this?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Walsh?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second, but I think Mike wants to say something.
Yes. When we've been, and the terminology gets me, too, Supervisor Gould. But it is what it is, and to be a cooperative, to have...
what it is, and to be a cooperative, to, to have a seat at the table, that we have to enter into this agreement. In the past, however, we've modified BLM standard form of agreement, or we, so that it's not so, it is even less onerous on Mojave County. In the old standard form of agreement, there were certain requirements placed on the county that were more imposing, and what we did was we removed those, and the revised agreements were found acceptable to the BLM, and, and we were able to enter into those agreements. Did we do that similar thing here?
And this actually, this is just to participate in creating that memorandum of understanding. So, so we would meet with the BLM, following the approval of this item, I would meet with the BLM, we would work out that memorandum of understanding to be a cooperating partner, bring it back to the board for approval before we-
And follow suit in the same train of thought as we've had previously?
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
We've been through being cooperating agencies before. It is the process that they go as, as bad of a process as it is, but the Moss Mine is in my district, and it is on county property, and so it's just important for us, as things go on, as things are dictated to us, that we do have a seat at the table.
It's just, it's more being proactive, and, you know, because if we don't, and then we
find out there's things happening that we don't want, it's a whole different ball of wax.
Sure. And the BLM is required by their own, by Congress to coordinate with local governments, and this is the way that you do it. It just, it's, the cooperating agency title, I think, it, you could either be cooperating or contentious, it just depends on the issues, but it's interesting that they call it a cooperative agency.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just as, as you talk about BLM, I hear BLM is moving to Colorado, so they'll be closer to the, to the land that they're lauding over, and we'll be able to hopefully make our-
Continue to turn Colorado blue.
Yes, yeah, probably. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries, and that's it. If there's nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.